The first item on the agenda is to confirm the minutes of the council meeting which took place on the 14th of October. Are you agree that I sign these as a correct record of these meetings?
Three.
Thank you very much, I will sign them later. Mr Taylor, do we have any apologies for absence, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have received apologies from councillors Stella Anderson-Payne, Gillian Beale, Lim Graffham, Jill Hargreaves, Carol King, Nikki Lee, Dennis Lee, Peter Martin, Jennifer O'Grady, Stephen O'Grady, Brett Vawley and Adam Taylor Smith, who will be running late.
Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, sorry, councillor James.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, first of all apologies for me being late, but also Elliot Nichols and Brett Vawley, both of my fellow colleagues will not be joining us tonight, and they send their apologies.
Thank you very much indeed. Item three on the agenda, in accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-percunory or disclosable pecuniary interest to declare? Mr Taylor, please.
None received in advance, Madam Mayor.
Very much. Are there any other declarations, members? No, good, thank you very much. Mayor's announcements. Members, ladies and gentlemen, since the last council meeting, there have been fifty-six duties, bringing the current total to one hundred and ninety-nine. There would have been more, but they came in fits and starts, so many thanks again to Deputy Mayor, councillor Mike Band, and former mayors councillor Patricia Ellis and councillor Tony Gordon-Smith for standing in on occasions. We had just under two hundred people at the Volunteers Tea Party at Charterhouse. While we can't do a lot, it is great to be able to give some recognition and an expression of thanks to representatives of the many organisations that helped to keep the borough operating as we know it. I'm also pleased to report that thanks to a donation from a gentleman who was unable to attend my fundraising concert at Charterhouse, we raised about three thousand three hundred pounds for Citizens of East Waverley. We could have done with a bigger audience, but huge thanks go to Godleming Band and Godleming Operatic Society for putting on such an amazing and enjoyable performance. While on the subject of fundraising, I'm delighted to say that the proceeds of the Mayor's Christmas Fair have now reached nine hundred and sixty pounds. Many, many thanks to all those who helped in whatever way. It was a lovely occasion, I think. The last couple of months have been particularly focused on commemorating the onset of World War One. My husband and I have been invited to see several very poignant exhibitions, both in schools and villages. However, for Remembrance Day itself this year, we went to Elsted, where we were made incredibly welcome. There were so many attendees at the service, that it was relayed to a screen in the village hall. It was a tremendous privilege to be invited to the Amadean Muslim Peace Convention at Merton Mosque. His Holiness the Caliph gave a very inspiring speech about world peace and the need for general condemnation of extremists. The Countess of Wessex came to celebrate the tenth anniversary of her opening the Transformer Housing Building in Farnham. But I was particularly thrilled to witness Farnham Swimming Club and French and Pond Sailability receiving certificates at the Surrey Sports Awards event a few days ago. We're already in the round of Christmas Fairs and carol concerts, but what is so amazing is the way that despite the services often being based on the same set of lessons in carols, the take on them is so different, and they're all delightful. If I could give you a few dates for your diaries, please, just to remind you that councillor Janet Somerville's funeral is to be held at St Nicholas Church Cranly at eleven thirty on Thursday the eighteenth of December. It would be nice if a few of us could manage to attend, I am hoping to attend in a personal capacity. On a happier note, the council's carol service, under the leadership of our chaplain, will be held in the chamber here on Friday the nineteenth of December. Light refreshments will be available from eleven o'clock in the Mayor's Parlor before the start of the service at eleven thirty. The Amadean Muslim community is very kindly organising a sponsored walk in aid of my mayoral charity on Saturday the fifteenth of March. Although this will mostly be undertaken by the young men from their college in Hazelmead, it is open to everybody and will consist of roots near and around the Devil's Punchbowl. I do hope some of the more energetic of you will feel able to take part. David Wright has also very kindly managed to get the bands from Godleming, Farnham and Hazelmead to agree to perform in a mass bands concert in aid of my mayoral charity on Sunday the twelfth of April 2015, that's the Sunday after Easter. Please make a note in your diary and try to come along. There were relatively few councillors at our last concert, so please do your best to support me next time. It is to be in Charterhouse Hall again. Thank you all very much indeed. Item five on the agenda, we now move on to formal questions. The first is from Mr Reed, please.
Madam Mayor, the Head of Planning, Matthew Evans, was reported in an article on the front page of the Cranly edition of the Surrey Advertiser, twenty-first of November, saying, "There is justification for applying the area of search for the sequential test across Cranly only. This is on the grounds that the draft Waverley Strategic Housing Market Assessment, October 2013, should be given weight, as it is evidence of housing need. This evidence identifies a need for housing in the settlement", in the settlement meaning Cranly. "Does the portfolio holder for planning agree with me that the head of planning is wrong and that the Sma does not identify housing need by settlement? If however he does not agree with me, would he please quote the exact location in the Sma by page and paragraph that identifies the housing need in Cranly?" Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Reed. Is our portfolio... Ah, hello, Mr Adams, councillor Adams, would you respond, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr Reed. While the overall Sma figure is borough-wide, there is plenty of information in the Sma which provides information on housing need in Cranly. For example, the draft Sma identifies on table twenty-two, that the proportion of households in Cranly that are unable to afford market need without subsidy is higher in Cranly than the other main settlements. Table twenty-three identifies the number of Cranly's households in unsuitable housing. Table twenty-four identifies the backlog need in Cranly. Table twenty-five identifies Cranly's need from newly forming households. And table twenty-six identifies Cranly's needs from existing households. Finally, table twenty-seven estimates Cranly's future overall housing need. So that is a complete record of what is required in Cranly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Adams. Mr Havron, I believe we have a question.
As Waverley has decided to rush straight to a draft local plan in March, ignoring the issues and options stage, would the council apologise for the use of the word "scenarios" in its consultation? As a fifth option is likely, why was that not included as originally agreed by council?
Thank you very much, Mr Havron. Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr Havron, for your question. It is not clear what fifth option is being suggested, or why the council needs to apologise for the use of the word "scenarios". The council considers that the best way to get the community's views on housing delivery is to consult on a number of reasonable alternatives. In the consultation on the four scenarios, there was also the opportunity for other scenarios to be promoted. A whole page on the back was available. The council's approach to producing a plan is consistent with government guidance. While it is keen to prepare a plan as soon as possible, it doesn't accept that it has been rushed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Adams. Item six on the agenda, do we... Mr Taylor, do we please have any questions received from members? Item seven on the agenda, Mr Taylor, have any motions been received from members, please?
One motion has been received from councillor Munro, the contents of which are set out in the agenda.
Thank you. Councillor Munro, do you have a second for your motion, please?
Yes, I have Madam Mayor, councillor Frost.
Thank you very much, and would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor, thank you very much indeed for that. The motion there is plain to see, I think its objective is to get some sort of pedestrianisation in Farnham Town Centre moving. And I use the word "some sort" that phrase advisedly, because there is far from consensus as to what sort of pedestrianisation there should be. I am going to mention five different strands, and people may well think they're rather disconnected, and I think that's probably the point. Our local MP, Jeremy Hunt, held a postal survey colloquially called a referendum, of course it's not technically a referendum. And just to remind people, that there was a turnout of twenty-seven per cent of all people in Farnham who responded by post, and pro pedestrianisation was fifty-two per cent and anti was forty-seven per cent. There was an actual scheme outlined in the survey document, but it was made clear that that scheme was an illustrative one, and by voting yes, you're not saying you actually support the scheme itself. So I think that was a reasonably clear, not overwhelming, but reasonably clear expression of view from Farnham residents, on a turnout which is not brilliant, but is not bad at all by recent standards, that there is a great wish that something should be done, although not clear, as I've said, about what should be done. East Street, Brightwells, which this council's policy, of course, is that it gets a move on and is completed as soon as possible, and that's certainly my fervent wish too. I have heard it said that that will be the saviour of Farnham as far as pedestrianisation is concerned, but really looking at just the public documents, of which there are many, that really is not the case. Brightwells is confined to a rather narrow part of the town, it's a big part, but it's not the whole part of the town, and the money, three hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds, has been quoted in a public document, one of Waverley's public documents, is to help. Whereas a scheme of worthwhile pedestrianisation, I've heard indicative figures of two million being quoted, and I'll come back to that later. So Brightwells will be a support for pedestrianisation, but cannot in my view be a centrepiece of that. More importantly, I think, is Surrey County Council's programme of desirable highways improvements over the next few years. And Farnham Town Centre measures for pedestrianisation is actually included in the programme, in fact, for implementation in 2016. And it always has, it has been there for a few years, and it will always be there, I think local councillors have enough clout to ensure that it is in the programme. But in my view, it isn't really in the programme. It's there on paper, but it's not there in reality, because it won't actually move beyond that stage until there's a very clear wish of Farnham people, that they actually want to agree, first of all, agree on the scheme, that's the easy bit, he says with tongue-in-cheek, and then to press forward for its implementation. There is a lot of work to do there. And fourthly, the issue of air quality, which is surely of concern to us all, and while it's good news that the Hindhead air quality area, whatever it's called, is now deemed to be sufficiently good, so it can be removed, that certainly cannot be said of Farnham Town Centre, particularly the borough. And it is common ground, surely, that that is caused by traffic, and so that perhaps is an extra impetus for us to do something once and for all, if that's possible. My final strand is the M3 LEP, the Local Enterprise Partnership. Now that's a body which covers basically East Hampshire and West Surrey, including Farnham and most of, in fact probably all of Waverley, and it has substantial amounts of money to play with, but it is, as the E in LEP implies, it is really there to promote business, enterprise, economy. And all the money it is going to be dispersing is going to be seen through that focus. And this is where Farnham, I think, will lose out, because one of the main reasons for pedestrianising, indeed sorting out all sorts of other traffic, is not so much economic objectives, although they are not unimportant, of course, but to make the lives of residents rather easier to prevent air quality degrading further, to allow people to cross the street in safety, to make Farnham basically a nicer place. So I think it's going to be quite difficult, again, in my personal view, to persuade the Local Enterprise Partnership that they should actually put Farnham in a higher priority, or at least an equivalent priority, to what they've identified as growth towns such as Basingstoke and so on. So there we all are, all these things are moving at a pace rather separated, but it does need someone to tie it all together. I don't actually think that that someone is Waverley, because it is not the Highways Authority, but I do think that Waverley Borough Council has a key role in actually promoting some sort of scheme, acting as the advocate for the Farnham community, so that at last we can get something done. And I very much look forward to the executive's wise scrutiny of a proposal and to come to some really good decisions.
Thank you very much, councillor Munro. Councillor Frost, would you like to speak?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I don't really wish to cover the things which councillor Munro has covered, but I think it is very important, for me certainly, and as you know, I wear another hat as well, and that is very much, that we work in partnership. I don't believe what we do in one town in this borough ought to be done on its own, we ought to have commitment from both authorities to do this. Whilst I have seen the plan that our MP has put forward, and it is well known that I was not exactly totally in favour of it, I do believe that with this postal survey, the people of Farnham have indicated that they are concerned and they want something done about it. But I don't believe we can do this just as a little piece on its own, I believe we need to look at the whole of the centre, Brightwells is part of it, so we need to really look at the centre of the town and say, between the two authorities and the people of the town, this is what we need. Air quality is a real issue in the town, you know, it's at heights which are, we wouldn't have dreamt of, but short of saying to people you can't take a car into Farnham, we can't do that. But we do need to have a look at how we're doing it, and we need to work together. So I'm delighted that this motion is going before the executive, I hope they will call on some of us to give evidence about it, and I hope at the end of the day, this council will be as committed as councillor Munro and I are, to ensure that this happens, and we work together and make it happen soon. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Frost. The item will therefore stand referred to the executive. Now we turn to the minutes of the executive committee. May I ask the leader to present to council, please? Thank you very much, leader. Could you move the minutes of the executive held on the fourth of November, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, indeed, I rise to present the minutes of the executive held on the fourth of November 2014, I have a second.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
The first minute is minute number eighty, that is the Budget Management Report, and there are two recommendations set out on page twelve, recommendations forty-three and forty-four.
Councillor Potts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In respect of the two recommendations before you on this report this evening, the government have now agreed to settle some of the two hundred thousand pounds of the Bellwijn claim for the costs of last year's adverse weather within the borough. However, despite officers pushing them on a number of occasions over the last few months, there is unfortunately a further thirty-nine thousand pounds of costs which the government are saying are not covered, and these are all HRA costs, and there is a request in the report for a supplementary estimate. The second recommendation that's before you, recommendation forty-four, refers to HRA revenue and capital costs, which are being closely monitored by our officers, and there's a request there to move one hundred thousand pounds of budget to ensure that we help to meet tenants' needs for responsive maintenance. So I would commend those recommendations to council, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Potts. No other speakers, leader, would you like to sum up, please? Nothing to say. Therefore, members, the recommendations forty-three and forty-four are on page twelve, are they agreed? Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, members, next minute eighty-one, this is a building control, this is a change of establishment, a set out in the papers on twelve and thirteen, with the recommendation number forty-five set out on page fourteen. The purpose of this is to seek approval for a change in the staffing establishment to appoint a new business manager, and I commend the recommendation to council.
No speakers. Therefore, the recommendation is forty-five on page fourteen, is that agreed, members? Thank you very much.
A minute eighty-two concerns the sale of a property in Farnham, and details are exempt and set out on page nineteen, twenty and twenty-one of the agenda, in some detail, and this is to seek approval to sell that property, and use the capital receipt to purchase an alternative affordable home in the local area to meet housing need. Recommendation forty-six is on page fourteen, and I commend it to council.
Thank you very much, leader. Again, is that agreed, members? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that brings to an end part one of the minutes, I think there are some speakers in part two.
Thank you very much, leader. Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just want to speak in support of the Wiggins Yard Environmental Improvement Project, which is at eighty-five. The restoration of the cobbles in Wiggins Yard was the biggest issue that emerged in the conservation area appraisal that took place in Godleming a couple of years ago, and I'm delighted that this is now being progressed. The town council supports this, and Subject to the Detail is very happy to work with Waverley to get this project finally realised, after a long period when nothing happened, mainly due to issues surrounding ownership, and I look forward to it being, as I said, progressed, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Reynolds. Councillor Steele? Councillor Neil, did you want to speak to that same point?
No.
Thank you. Councillor Steele?
It wasn't that point I was speaking on, Madam Mayor, but thank you, I was speaking on the air quality again, which is item eighty-eight.
Thank you, councillor Steele, would you please go ahead?
Shall I go ahead? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been a councillor now for eight years, and even before that, every year, environmental health at Waverley have been reporting on the situation regarding air pollution, and that's been mentioned by our two colleagues this evening already. There, I think, we have monitored it every year, that is our role, and passed on the results, but as far as I know, nothing has yet been done in all that period of time. And Farnham has more hotspots than any other similar town in Surrey. And hotspot is a euphemism for high carbon dioxide levels, and it's been shown quite clearly that carbon dioxide does cause respiratory disease, particularly in young children under the eight years of age, and it kills thousands a year. And CO2 fumes are basically caused by diesel fumes, and that's what is the cause in Farnham, and it's already been mentioned, we have four major roads running through the middle of Farnham. Historically, that might have worked, it doesn't work now, but they're A-roads, so you can't restrict traffic, is what we're told. So it's not going to be easy to solve, I realise that, but there are things that one can do, and certainly, I know that the Farnham Traffic Task Group have looked at a plan which I think is helpful, and goes a long way to helping the current situation. But I would point out that just recently, a paper's been produced to say that schools and care homes should now not be built on roads which carry a lot of traffic. And there are some LPAs in their local plan who actually say there shouldn't be development on busy main roads. So all I'm asking is, we keep monitoring this, and that's our role, there's not much else we can do, although we did spend twenty thousand pounds some years ago to put signs up at the station, asking people when they're waiting for the barriers to open, which is twenty-five per cent of the day, to switch off their engines, that hasn't had, I'm afraid, a great deal of success. But that's about all we can do, and we should be applauded for that, but I'm just asking, good Waverley, please, ensure that the health of Farnham and indeed other areas in Waverley that are affected by air pollution, that the residents aren't at further risk by really emphasising to Surrey that we do need out-of-the-box thinking now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Steele. Leader, would you care to respond?
No, no, nobody else is allowed to speak, no. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think councillor Steele has made some very valid points, indeed, we collect the data and then pass it on, but aren't actually responsible for getting it down, although I think we would all like to. He made the point around the barriers at the railway station, I've met South West trains on a couple of occasions, and asked if the barriers need to come down as the train leaves Waterloo or Alton, which is what seems to happen, and they assure me it's all timed and very good. The health of residents, I heard the article on the radio yesterday, indeed that councillor Steele was referring to, and about building schools on main roads, but as one contributor pointed out, many of the cars causing the pollution at the schools are the mothers dropping the children off in their diesels. So it is a problem, it is a problem we've got to look at, and we have made applications and suggestions to others regarding controlled zones, and that hasn't come to an end yet, perhaps not as positive as we hoped it may be, but a controlled zone for diesels may be an unpopular move, but it's something that we have been looking at and haven't quite given up on yet.
Thank you, leader.
Thank you, if you have no more speakers, that concludes the minutes for the fourth of November, and I commend them to council.
Thank you very much. Members, is that agreed? Thank you. Leader, could I ask you to move the minutes of the executive held on the second of December, please?
Thank you very much, I move the minutes of the executive held on the second of December 2014, and I have a second.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, the first item is the Budget Management Report, set out on page ninety-four, there are three recommendations, forty-seven to forty-nine on page ninety-five, and I commend them to council.
Thank you very much, leader. Councillor Ramsdale, I believe you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I'd like to speak briefly on bullet point five of paragraph ninety-eight point one on page ninety-four, which is the item concerning the funds for the separation of Rowland House and Rowleys. Speaking as someone who lives in a house that I have some shared services with my next-door neighbour, and we get the confusion out of that, I'm really pleased to see that we've been able to afford this money, so that the two buildings can be separated and both work efficiently and effectively on their own. I did want to find out from the portfolio holder, if possible, confirmation that this is an important step to being able to make full use of the two separate buildings... is an important step to being able to make full use of the two separate buildings and it won't be having an adverse impact on the day centre, which is in one of the two buildings. Thank you.
Very much, councillor Ramsdale. Councillor Potts?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm pleased to clarify that the actual cost of the separation and all the subsequent works that will be involved will actually come from the HRA, the housing revenue account, and it in no way affects Rowleys in terms of their grant or anything like that. That is something that is completely separate. This is being funded for, all the funds for this work will be coming from the housing revenue account. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor, I'm sorry, can I call you Mary tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to my colleague beside me for asking that question. Can I, can you please just with a little bit of your indulgence, because I think what we've got at the moment is Age UK and Rowleys being overlapped. And it's very confusing and very difficult for us backbenchers to understand the whole integrity of the process. And when it comes to the funding, so I would like to ask for further clarification and seeking assurance that the funding that we're talking about here does not affect Rowleys in any way, shape or form, in terms of its grants or any other revenue. And that we may consider, with your indulgence once again, Madam Mayor, may I request respectfully that maybe a way forward in all of this, it was taken away from the opportunity of community ONS to look at an in-depth review of elderly services in Waverley. And I was just wondering if we could perhaps get some sort of meeting going together. So we, as backbenchers, we fully understand what's going on, so it is very difficult to know what's going on. And I would just respectfully ask that perhaps the executive would consider a meeting where the information come back to the backbenchers is very clear. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor. Somebody might do want to say that? Right. Any more speakers? Sorry. Oh, sorry. Councillor J.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I first of all like to endorse what councillor Foroszewski suggested. But it is a shame that having requested a call-in and actually asked for support for that call-in for precisely this item, that that was ignored. And it's just, I just find it absolutely amazing that the process and the procedure that we actually have in place for backbenchers, in terms of the call-in, which meant everyone could have attended, everyone could have made their points, and we could have reviewed the situation in a much, much more open and transparent situation scenario, has been ignored. But thank you, Madam Mayor.
Right. Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Thornton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to talk about the toilets at Broadwater, actually, at 98.2 on page 95. I'm pleased to be able to support this proposed investment in the public toilets at Broadwater Park and keep the toilets open. Over the last few years, the toilets have been patched up and unfortunately have been, stopped them from being vandalised and have been out of use. I feel that by setting aside a budget that we can upgrade the toilets properly, making them not only better for users but much more vandal-proof. Once we have approved, with approval for this budget, I would task my team with coming up with a refurbishment plan that is vandal-proof and offers value for money. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thornton. Councillor Frost?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I want to come back to the Rowleys issue. We are in fact debating not Rowleys' grant, nothing to do with that. We're not re-examining the whole thing that we went through last year. We are debating the Budget Management Report. And it says very clearly that that amount of money is coming from the RHA to carry out works to separate the two buildings. Please, don't let us go into another emotional wrangling when we're trying to look at something quite simple and quite separate. That's all I have to say, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Frost. Any other speakers? Leader? Oh, sorry. Councillor Byham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's rather a rush at the end, but I decided, having read the documentation again, I wanted to comment. It's a comment about Broadwater toilets. I thought at one stage that we were going to do away with those toilets and use the leisure centre toilets as a perfectly good, well-policed facility, which is not very far from where the existing toilets are, as far as I understand. Our experience of toilets and their vandalism in Bramley was such that we ended up giving it away, knocking it down, and it's now part of an existing house there. It is a waste of time. It's a longstanding problem. Unless we've got a policeman to stand outside and stop all those well-good users of that particular area going in and vandalising the material, we're going to end up coming back in a year's time or two years' time for more and more money. What is wrong with a leisure centre which is open for much longer periods, perhaps, than the toilets are, under our present management, being used instead of it? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will answer your point, Maurice. Unfortunately, the leisure centre, you can't use the toilets because you have to actually have accessed into the centre and paid in order for you to get to the toilet. I believe there's only one disabled loo that is the right side of the barriers, if you like, and obviously that wouldn't be sufficient. And councillor Thornton did say that this is going to be a vandal-proof toilet. Let's hope he's right.
Thank you very much, councillor Reynolds. Councillor Tom Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't going to talk about toilets, but I feel compelled to. Perhaps I should declare an interest. As the father of a two-and-a-half-year-old, actually, the distance from the play area to the leisure centre is probably far enough that accidents will happen. And given that we, there is a possibility of having facilities right next to a very large play area that is much-used and much-loved in the community, I think if we can find a way of making vandal-proof toilets, I think we should give it a go. And I wish councillor Thornton all the best luck in getting this sorted out and I really hope it comes to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leader? I think we've saved this.
Thank you very much. Much of what I would have said in response to some of the things has been said, but in response to councillor Foroszewski, I think the deputy leader made it clear, this has no effect whatsoever on the grant for Rowleys. We are very, very clear. We continue to support that. This is coming out of the housing revenue account. It is a building matter, as councillor Frost has said. And with regard to the grants, that will come before the ONS committee. Once the grants panel has considered them, it will come before ONS. Mrs. James referred to not being able to call it in. And I think for the record, just to be clear, she said she wasn't allowed to or it was stopped. To be able to call in a matter to a committee, you have to be a member, which Mrs. James is not a member of that committee. And therefore, your item could not be called in and no one else has called it in. Hadn't anybody wanted to, they could have done so. Nobody stopped it. But there are rules and you have to be a member to do so.
Thank you very much, leader. Therefore, the recommendations are 47, 48 and 49 on page 95. Are they agreed? Thank you.
Members, minute 99 is regarding Waverley Initiatives Limited. And the purpose of this is to seek approval to strike off the company, as it's been dormant since soon after its creation. It was created some years ago. Members will remember when there were some restrictions on the housing revenue account and the amount of money we used to pay over 50% of our income from our properties to government to be reallocated in other parts of the country. And we were considering using this company as a way to provide new accommodation. The rule was changed after a campaign led by this council, in fact. And we have never had to use the company, which is, as I have said, is dormant. The directors don't want to be directors. The company secretary has to be provided from officers, annual returns and registration has to be completed, which is totally pointless. So therefore, we are recommending that, as in 50 and 51, the company be wound up and struck off. I commend those recommendations to council.
Thank you very much, leader. Don't seem to have any speakers. Therefore, the recommendations on page 50 and 51, on page, sorry, recommendations 50 and 51 on page 96, are they agreed? Thank you.
A minute 100 is enforcement policy for regulatory services. And there is one recommendation, number 52, which is set out on page 98. This is to seek the approval for the draft Waverley Borough Council enforcement policy for regulatory services.
Councillor O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proposal sets forth a common sense approach to inspection and enforcement on a wide range of activities, subject to regulation. And you'll find these listed as item 100.4 on page 97. The proposal reflects current legislation, guidance and best practice, but it also recognises the fact that blind, unamagentive enforcement, which takes little account of immediate circumstances, may not only impose unnecessary and much-resented burdens on business and individuals, but may indeed arouse contempt for the regulatory process. By contrast, the approach recommended here is one aimed at securing cheerful compliance rather than sullen acquiescence. Where individuals or business are not meeting regulatory requirements, then a phased and escalating process will be followed, starting with friendly advice, moving up to admonishment and formal warnings, and only when such measures have failed, to move towards prosecution. In all cases, individual circumstances will be taken into account and the council approach will be both measured and appropriate. I believe the council officers have developed a very pragmatic enforcement policy and have no hesitation in recommending it to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Neill. No speakers? Therefore, the recommend, leader, if you have anything to say? The recommendation is 52 on page 98. Is that agreed? Thank you.
A minute 101, the Waverley Borough Council review of street trading policy, as it's set out in the papers, with one recommendation on page 100, recommendation 53.
Councillor O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is essentially a cleaning-up exercise based on a review of the street trading policy, which was introduced by Waverley back in 2009. In that period, there have been no legislative changes which affect the policy. But the opportunity has been taken for a review by the Licensing and Regulatory Committee and to solicit views from third parties by a consultation process. The revised policy has also attached to it an up-to-date listing of streets in which trading may be consented to in specific circumstances and those in which it is not permitted. Such designations of streets can be amended at any time without going through a policy amendment procedure. These designations are currently the subject of further review to address representations made during the consultation process. And indeed, regular reviews will be essential for ensuring that this policy is implemented pragmatically in time to come. Both officers and the Licensing Committee have done valuable work on this low-profile but essential item and they deserve our appreciation. I therefore have pleasure in commending this proposal to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Neill. So the recommendation is number 53 on page 100. Is that agreed? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members, minute 102 concerns a review of the parliamentary polling districts and polling places with two recommendations. This matter has been before council before, when there were more recommendations for change at that time. Since then, as set out in the papers, an alternative polling station has been found in Grayswood, Hazelmeir, but unfortunately, the one in Farnham was found to be unsuitable. Two recommendations for council, recommendations 54 and 55, set out on page 101.
Thank you, leader. Councillor Frost?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm delighted that this matter has been reviewed once again, but can I just say how very disappointed I am that we have not been able to find an alternative venue instead of using St Peter School? I know the parents and staff at that school will be particularly disappointed, especially as it acts as two polling stations and not simply one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Councillor Munro?
I'm one of the local ward members there. Could I just echo Mrs. Frost's comments? I'm very, I accept officers have done a thorough review and we, of course, have been involved in that. And you cannot magic a polling station out of thin air where none exists. But it is a shame that we cannot find a polling station. It's not just the school, important though that is, I absolutely agree with Mrs. Frost. But actually, some voters, potential voters, are having to walk quite a long way. There simply isn't a suitable space. So could I just really urge officers, I'm sure they do it anyway, but I will urge them, you know, don't let up. And if they hear of anything, that applies to anybody, I suppose, a suitable venue, can we please press it into service as soon as possible?
Thank you very much, councillor Munro.
Thank you very much. And as members have recognised, the officers did a great deal of work and keep looking. But the reasons that they were unable to find alternative for approval to them are set out in 102.4 and the 102.5 of the agenda. There are two recommendations, 54 and 55, and I commend them to council.
Thank you. Members, are they agreed? Thank you.
A minute 103 is the Joint Planning Committee, the appointment of substitutes. Set out in the papers, this proposal is to make the Joint Planning Committee robust so that should there be apologies from members of that committee, a member from the same area planning committee that that apology comes from can be called as a substitute. The usual rules as set out in the party allocation supply, therefore, the substitute would come from the same group as well as the same area committee. One recommendation, that is set out at 56 on page 103, and it is proposed that these come into effect from the 1st of January 2015.
Thank you very much, leader. No, ah, councillor Brian Ellis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As chairman of the Joint Planning Committee, I am pleased to support this recommendation. Over the number of meetings we have held quite recently, and some of them strategic, at least to the village in which I live, I have detected a degree of unease on the part of members of the public attending the meetings to discover that one-third of membership have not actually appeared. I hope that this will redress that balance. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ellis. No other speakers? Therefore, the recommendation is number 56 on page 103. Is that agreed? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that brings to an end part one of these minutes. I believe you have some speakers in part two.
Councillor Potts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to just speak very briefly about item 106, the setting of the council tax base and the business rate base for 2015-16. And just really to give a very top line on this, because it was a very technical report that came before executive. However, we do have to approve these estimates ahead of the budget-setting process for next year. I think everyone here will be pleased to hear, as will all the towns and parishes, that the figures are showing an increase in both the business rate and the council tax base, which will help us to balance our budget next year. But for obviously the towns and parishes, this is good news for them as well, as nearly all of them have seen their council tax base increase. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
On item 107, councillor Potts, would you like to speak again?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues will recall that it's just a year ago now, time flies by, doesn't it, that the restructuring and streaming of the organisation was really agreed. Now, this actually officially kicked in, as it were, on January 1st of this year. And it's... year, and it's led to a contribution to an annual saving of some one hundred and thirty-two thousand pounds. And, as I say, that's been identified in the budget review, and that really is a good achievement. However, it's not just about savings. What we really wanted to ensure when this whole review took place was that we had a very robust senior management structure, a structure that was really set to take us forward. And we've seen that, not just with the savings that we've achieved, but with the way in which the senior management team are working very, very effectively, both with the executive, but also overall with our members. They're achieving all the various statutory requirements that are required, and ongoing, they've ensured an awful lot, a real, really good amount of resilience in a number of different areas. One, for example, being the transfer of payroll to Epsom and Yule Borough Council, so that that aspect of our work is extremely resilient. Officers, I'm pleased to say, having just started to complete a number of the budgetary processes for next year, continue to work and identify savings. And that really is important, because what is important for us as a council, and especially as an administration, is that by working with our officers, we don't just deliver savings, but that we deliver the frontline services for our residents for the year coming and future years. So thank you for your indulgence, madam mayor, and thank you to all the officers who have really worked so hard across this year.
Thank you very much, councillor Potts. Leader?
Thank you very much, and I'd like to endorse what the deputy leader has said, because it's a very accurate summary of what has happened, and it was quite difficult this time last year, when we were going through this restructuring of the senior management. And we set out, as has been said, to achieve one hundred and thirty-two thousand pounds, and we have achieved one hundred and thirty-two thousand pounds of ongoing savings to help protect frontline services. And it has been achieved, and it brings the total annual cost savings in senior management achieved since this conservative administration took control in two thousand and seven to three-quarters of a million pounds a year, which I think is no mean achievement. Also, can I just mention, last year, there was the possibility in the restructuring of one redundancy, and members asked, and we were keen to ensure that we were able to redeploy, and that also was achieved. The person was not made redundant, but was redeployed.
Very good. Thank you very much, leader. Item one oh nine, councillor Richard Gates.
Thank you, madam mayor. First, I think in relation to this item, it should not be overlooked that Waverley has already facilitated a major scheme of PV panels on Waverley council houses. Additional installations are most certainly to be welcomed, so this is good news, potentially for tenants, and particularly also for the environment. There is, I accept, a risk that over the next four months, the study might not be completed, and therefore continuity would be lost with a new council. And whilst I would personally like to have seen this happen sooner, I consider the executive's decision sensible and offering the best chance of success. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gates. Councillor Jane Thompson.
Thank you, madam mayor. I do appreciate councillor Gates's comments. The fitting of solar panels is exactly what we should be doing as a council, because, as he has said, it does support our corporate priorities, tackling emissions and greenhouse and carbon emissions, but very importantly, supporting the members of our community most vulnerable to fuel poverty, not just now, but in ten years and twenty years, and probably in thirty years as well. And we should be thinking long-term about the welfare of our most vulnerable residents. So from that point of view, I'm delighted, or well, I don't know if that's quite the right word, to see that we are considering this seriously. But I have to say, I'm disappointed, because the initial report did come before executive and last year, and the analysis was flawed, and ONS recognised the need to bring forward a more accurate piece of work, and agreed to set up a subcommittee back in the spring, in March. So there has been time, and I'm disappointed that executive have further delayed the process. Firstly, on a matter of principle, really, because this is a request from ONS, and I think executive need to be very cheery of not reacting in a timely fashion when it is from an overview and scrutiny committee. And secondly, I'm disappointed because there is an added element of risk when you leave it to the next administration, because we are not the next administration. And I think that adds risk to the project's future success. I hope I'm being rather less than optimistic, and I hope I prove wrong, but I really think that we should have got on with this in a more timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Leader?
Thank you very much, and clearly councillor Gates's remarks are very welcome, and that we do want to get on with some of these things. Just in response to councillor Thompson, the matter only came to the executive last week, so I can't comment on where it was between the spring, or whenever it was decided to ask for that, and last week, because that's when it came. And the executive did feel that by the time it had been approved and matters were set up, it would leave about two months to do all the work. Waverley has long recognised the importance of energy efficiency and invested significantly in recent years. We have actively explored newer technologies such as solar panels. In two thousand and eleven, with other significant financial inducements from the government, the council entered into partnership with Savills to install PV panels on four hundred and sixty council properties. These properties were selected as being the most suitable for PV panels, taking into account their size, location, condition, and the direction of the main roof was facing, which is very important. Many of those properties looked at were not suitable because of the way they faced, and they wouldn't receive enough light to be operative. Officers continued to review and further extend the PV panels, but for a business case, we need a detailed look at this, because there is a significant reduction in government support available. There are additional liabilities that fall on the council when needing to undertake routine repairs to these roofs, and the fact that those buildings most likely to benefit from the PV panels have already been done in two thousand and eleven. However, the council is continuing to invest successfully in tried-and-tested energy efficiency measures that are capable of delivering a value of three hundred and sixty-five days a year in all-weather conditions. And this includes cavity wall and loft installations, window replacements, central heating and hot water upgrades, and energy-efficient lighting.
Thank you very much, leader. No other speakers. Then, is that the end of the...
If you have no other speakers, that concludes my report on minutes of the second of December, and I commend them to council.
Thank you, leader. Are those minutes agreed? Thank you. Minutes of the Joint Planning Committee, held on the twenty-eighth of October, on page twenty-five. Could I ask councillor Brian Ellis to present, please?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the Joint Planning Committee, held on the twenty-eighth of October two thousand and fourteen, and I do believe that I have a second.
Please, a second, madam mayor.
This meeting considered an application for four hundred and twenty-five new dwellings in Cranley. Unfortunately, we were waiting, in fact, we didn't get a response from the flood and water services manager in the county council's highways team, and this meeting had to be, or rather, the application had to be deferred. It will return to the Joint Planning Committee, I believe, on the fifth of January. That completes my report. Thank you.
Just make one technical adjustment. I was present at that meeting, but my name does not appear.
Thank you, councillor Mullin. I'm sure that will be noted. Members, are those minutes agreed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the Joint Planning Committee, held on the twelfth of November two thousand and fourteen, when it considered an application for land at Riverside Farnham. I believe I have a second. Thank you very much, madam mayor. I have no recommendations to the council in part one, and I have not been made aware of any comments or questions in part two. That completes my report. Thank you.
Very much, councillor Ellis. Are those minutes agreed? Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor, and I'm pleased to present the minutes of the Joint Planning Committee and its meeting of the seventeenth of November two thousand and fourteen.
Please, a second, on the most hard-working committee in the council.
This, in fact, madam mayor, was for the erection of a new building to provide thirty-one retirement appointments, apartments, and a new church building as well. I have no recommendations to the council in part one, and I have not been made aware of any comments or questions in part two. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Ellis. Are those minutes agreed, members? Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Ellis. Item ten on the agenda, minutes of the audit committee. Could I ask councillor Richard Gates to present, please?
Thank you, madam mayor. Pleased to present the minutes of the audit committee of the nineteenth of November. I have a second.
Please, a second, madam mayor.
Thank you. We have one recommendation under part one, which demonstrates we work just as hard as joint planning. This concerns revised governance policies. They're all finance or fraud-related. The policies have previously been approved by council. However, certain changes reflecting best practice and organisational changes have been incorporated. The audit committee has scrutinised these and accordingly recommends the revised policies as set out in the agenda to council.
Thank you very much, councillor Gates. Are those minutes agreed? Oh, is that recommendation? I beg your pardon. The recommendations are on one and two are on page forty-four. Are they agreed? Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. In part two matters of report, I believe, madam mayor, you have speaker or speakers.
Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, madam mayor. If I can briefly speak to the annual audit letter, which is paragraph thirty-three on page forty-four. As a former audit manager and an accountant in the public sector who's been subject to an audit, I'm well aware of just how demanding that can be on the finance staff, and indeed all of the finance management structure. I'm thus very pleased about the conclusions that have been come to. I think they're almost unprecedented in the praise that's been given. Would the Chair of Audit agree with me? This is excellent and reflects very well on the finance staff and all levels of financial management in the council.
Councillor Gates?
Thank you very much, councillor Ramsdale. I could not agree more. The letter could not have been better, and I do endorse the congratulations to staff and to the hard-working members throughout the council who have contributed to these results. Waverley offers competence, not chaos. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Gates. That concludes the minutes. Are they agreed, members? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, councillor Gates. Now we're back somewhere around here. Thank you. Right. Item eleven, the council is asked to approve the appointment of councillor Diane James for the Joint Planning Committee for the remainder of the council year. Is that agreed, members? Thank you very much. Item twelve. As at one, the council is asked to agree to the extended absence of councillor Lynne Graffan for a further six months due to her recent ill health. Is that agreed? Item thirteen, there are no exempt items to consider, and I declare this meeting closed.